Okay, so we'll just go with this for recording. We don't have YouTube this. All right, we all stand for invocation. Marty will you lead us?
Dear Father, we thank you for this time for us to come together and discuss city business. Thank you for the wisdom that you've imparted on all of us and just help us to keep an open mind and make good decisions and be with our law enforcement and firemen and the whole city council.
Samantha will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to justice.
All right, we'll convene our meeting, we'll start with the roll call. Misty Cottle?
Here.
Jeff Upton?
Here.
Jan Throgmorton? Marty Lindeberry? John Collins?
Here.
Dana McKnight?
Here.
Dawn Rollins?
Here.
Jimmy Conduff? Our city attorney and city clerk are both present. We'll start with the adoption of our agenda. Are there any changes that need to be made to the agenda as it was mailed? Do we have a motion?
I'd like a motion that we accept the agenda as.
Second.
You got a motion in second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries, next is the approval of our meeting minutes from April 12th. Are there any changes that need to be made there? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes as well.
Second.
These seconds are coming slowly. We have a motion in second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is our public forum. Do we have anyone who would like to address the council tonight? No, we'll close the public forum. And we have a political candidate with us tonight, Nikki, would you come up and introduce yourselves? Tell us a little bit about what you're running for and why?
Yes, so my name is Nikki Lockett, I'm running for Justice of the Peace of District 14, and you haven't seen my name on any signs. I haven't, I haven't spent much time campaigning so far because you all probably are aware with the food supply risks and shortages, my husband and I have been busy getting a chicken coop built, and that is now complete with nine chicks and expanding our garden this year, and so now I've got time to focus on the campaign. But a little bit about myself, I've lived in Washington County since 1991, Fayetteville, I came up here from Little Rock to go to college. Didn't do so well because I kind of party, anyway, so went through hard knocks, got pregnant, worked full-time, went back to school, got my degree in accounting, became a CPA, I still have a license, I'm inactive, but I still file every year, I just don't do the CPE requirements. But through that experience, I did learn, you know, not to judge people because you never know what's going on in their lives and make them to do things that, like I did things I'm not proud of, but I did get a great son out of it. And so I've, you know, been through periods where I was digging in the couch cushions for coins, but then worked really hard, worked full-time, went back to school with a small son, and thankfully, God has blessed me to be successful in my career and also happy in my life. And so because of the experiences that our nation has blessed me to have those opportunities to make poor decisions, but then work hard and then with enough determination and hard work, I've been able to live a happy, healthy life. I, you know, want everybody else to have the same opportunities, and what we're seeing going on with our nation, I have really concerns that our freedoms and our liberties are getting chipped away quickly now. Started, I started notice about 20 years ago, but really the past, we all seen the past couple of years, it's been lightning speed. And so last year, when I started to really understand the turmoil our nation was in, and that really the changes can be effective at the state and local level. I used to think it was at the Washington DC level, but I've had a great quick learning of civics in the past year and a half. I was in DC on the sixth, although I was not in the Capitol, but I did go the day that Trump said that he was going to be there to do a rally. I booked my hotel room and I drove up there by myself. And I did attend the rallies and what you saw on TV is not in reality what the experience was like. But I am a true patriot, I love our country, and I just want to be able to protect the freedoms that we do have because I want future generations to have the same opportunities if they do make poor choices, to be able to work hard and make good decisions so they can live a happy, healthy life. What else is I going to say about myself? Not that I'm, I'm not one that really likes to talk about myself a lot. I can't really speak how I compare to other candidates. I'll tell you just real quick about my work history, I was a almost 19-year Walmart corporate associate. I had different roles in finance, accounting, internal audit. I did lead some, like I led a team of 14 direct reports for a couple of years doing financial planning on the same side of the business. Always wanted to be a buyer from that point, so I was a buyer in hardware for seven years. They did a reord where we picked up the econ side in addition to the store side. So they promoted me to a senior buyer role, moved me over to the DIY department, and I was managing over half a billion dollar business, P&amp;L, so I do understand the audit piece, the financial piece, leading the team. I learned in Walmart how to make decisions fact-based in a very logical database, not necessarily emotional-based. And I think a lot of people we have in government today, they, it's political and it's emotional. But I also have strong negotiation skills, which I learned through my career in Walmart as well, which helps when you're trying to work with different people, with different perspectives. But I did put in my two weeks' notice, the very end of July last year, the day the email went out to corporate associates that they were going to mandate the COVID jab, and I did tell my boss, who I really liked and worked well with that, I felt like it was tyranny, I was not going to partake in it. So I left the company, didn't have a job for about six weeks, and then a supplier I had worked with, had a good relationship with, reached out and saw I worked for that company. So I work in Bentonville, but I live out in, off of Reesey Valley in Prairie Grove. Been there for about 15 years, once my husband, he built a house out there, and we've been together, and I moved out there to be with him, so that's where our chicks are as well. I have a 20-year-old, 24-year-old son, he's married. He took a pause from med school this past year, I think he was a little confused because of all the medical stuff going on with COVID. And then he's going to go back and re-enroll in August for his second year of med school. That's a little bit about me. There, Arkansas Democrat has ran a, on their online, they're looking at candidates where, or races where there's multiple candidates to get their perspective, same questions. You know, do you support the Washington County jail expansion, if so, why or why not? Do you think the CARES Act money should fund it, why or why not? You know, why do you think you're the best candidate? So if you're interested, I don't compare myself with others, I learned early in the career, somebody said, "Don't base your career off someone else." And that's been really good advice, so I really can't tell you how I compare with other candidates. I just feel like if you understand where somebody's position is and that it's genuine, you know, that kind of stands for itself. And I will say that the growth, what I saw happen at Walmart in the past 20 years, where it was a company that went from ordinary people doing extraordinary things, which was my favorite saying Sam Walton said, and I loved it because there were people, the best people I worked with were people that had a GED, or that just had a high school, not just, but had a high school plumber GED, because common sense, problem solvers, and they're willing to roll up their sleeves and get their hands dirty. Not necessarily, didn't see the same thing with people that came from big, you know, master degrees from some of the big schools. But what's happened, and we've seen it in this area as well, it changed the dynamics of the company, and we're seeing it in Northwest Arkansas is they're bringing in East Coast, West Coast, and the company culture changed dramatically, almost on a Marxism level, and it's being infiltrated into the schools around here with, you know, whatever you want to name it, critical race theory Marxism. And it's, as you're seeing the growth and the residential areas keep spreading out, I mean, I don't know how many new storage unit facilities we need to have in these rural areas, but I love living in a rural area because I think the culture, I think the family unit is very important, and we need people in these positions who are willing to not bend the need to big business, especially interest. And that's why I feel like that I'm a great candidate because I do understand the financials piece of it, but I, I don't bend the need to big business, and I understand, you know, how to fight back against those.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move into our business reports. Walter? You got a planning commission report for us?
Good evening, I do. Since our last report, we had a regular meeting, and our special meeting with Julia Ritchie. At our regular meeting, we finally hashed out our term limits, or actual when, when they started and when they're going to last. So I hope you guys have a copy of the minutes and everything now. So the way we worked it out is we numbered from one through seven, and then so the first two will go one year, the next two, numbers three and four, will go the next year, four and five and six will go the third year, and then number seven goes to the fourth year. So we have four, four-year terms, so every, every year, two people are up. And so that's the way we worked that, I guess we're still waiting for the city council to approve that, or that is?
Yeah, we'll get that on an agenda and get the council to approve that.
And then also with our special meeting with Julia Ritchie, we finally got a giant map, and we were a little apprehensive to start marketing it, but we did it a good little bit. We didn't really go into hashing out districts or zones, like placing any commercial or any of the mixed use. We did it more based on civic spaces, recreational space, residential low-density, medium-density, walkable neighborhood, downtown mixed use, and then just random mixed use. And for the most part, we're doing a lot of mixed use. If anybody sees any larger-scale commercial that they see going in current city limits, come make your case because right now, we're not really seeing much area where we could put large-scale commercial. So with that, let's see, our next meeting for that, we made it to 20:09. Monday, May 23rd, at 6:30 will be our next special meeting with Julia Ritchie, and then here, not this Thursday, but next Thursday at 6:30 will be our planning commission meeting. So any questions?
No? Thank you, Walter. So what Walter was talking about a little bit there on their terms, we, we basically lost track of who replaced who on the planning commission. So that's always, the way that's been is when one member would resign, we had it by name, so Jeff resigned and Deana steps in for Jeff. Well, there for a while, we had quite a bit of turnover on the planning commission, we forgot who Deana stepped in for. So what we've done is labeled the positions, much like the council, and we are resetting based on when, when the current member started. So they, they are not term limited, but they serve a four-year term, and then they get re-recommended by the mayor for council approval. We'll get something, just so that the city council can see what we've done and bless that for us. Yeah, so we're just trying to, to kind of start from where these current members came in at.
I consider we could lose track of. Follow, follow the rules, reset for ourselves.
All right, next, Tracy with the court report.
On the, it looks like when looking at our citations and stuff, we were down quite a few from last year at this time. I don't know, I don't know what happened, but it's, I mean, we're down like more than 50, that seems like a lot to me. Anyway, our disbursements are just right around the same, we're just less than a thousand different from last month. And then on a year, year to year, we're down about 25,000 from last year, the disbursements, same time. Everything seems to be going well.
Okay, any questions for Tracy? Tracy, Tracy's going to be going to a class soon, when is that?
The week of Memorial.
Week of Memorial?
Yeah, June 1st, 2nd, 3rd.
Okay. So, and that's going to prepare you, tell us Tracy, I'm dragging this out of you.
I'm going to a court manager, sorry, let's see, certified court manager program. Anyway, Arkansas is one of the few states that has been approved to teach this program, and they only take 25 court clerks a year. So I was happy to be accepted into that, I don't know what they're going to teach me, but I'm really excited to learn about it. And then my plan right now is to come back and be able to share that with Prairie Grove and with Greenland and some of the other court clerks.
That's fantastic.
And with you guys, I'll share what I learned.
Okay. Thank you, Tracy. Next, the library report, Blair.
All right, so first, I am happy to announce that we have received a $20,000 grant from the Washington County Library System to put towards our parking lot renovation, which will hopefully begin in October. Sometime, maybe earlier, but October would be safe. Next, we've started early signups for our summer reading program. Our kickoff will begin June 2nd, and so you can sign your kids up now, just go to our website, the signup ribbon is right there on the front page. Also, we have received our, the Amasium in Bentonville, which is a children's museum, received a grant to distribute steam kits, which are just kits that, which, it has a bunch of tools in it, and that allows us to incorporate things like activities that include science and technology into our crafts, and so we were really grateful to have that. I also have, we have a new exhibit on display, it's our Arkansas Cookbooks, it's actually coming down at the end of the month, and then after that, we will have an exhibit curated by Jim Norwood, who's a local master naturalist, and he'll have, it'll be, we don't have a title for it yet, but it'll be on the topic of the geology of West Fork, so rocks. Fossils, that kind of thing, if that's your thing, then should be up by June 1st, you can come check it out. Any questions?
Any questions for Blair? So when she said they had steam kits, I thought that she was talking about like steam engines.
No, that's cool.
Deana knows what it is.
We may know what it is.
Hey, the rest of this group, just as shallow-minded as me, you'll have to tell them what steam is. I know John Collins don't know what steam is.
Okay.
Tell me.
I was thinking, these kids are going to burn themselves.
It's essentially just a method for teaching that incorporates science, technology, engineering, arts. So it used to be STEM, so you know STEM, so steam is just you incorporate the arts in it as well, and mathematics.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Blair.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
I could have made up something.
Chief Nelson, get us back in order here.
She had more than 50 citations, maybe because of the rain?
Well, we wrote 144 citations, so I don't know where you're calling that, probably it's not us. I checked with some other departments.
You had step go on, didn't you?
We had step, we stayed busy with it, so. We've had 401 calls for services, way over what we normally have. 95 warnings, our citations, or sorry, our warrants were 66. As many of you guys noticed, the weather's coming back, it's getting hotter. We've had several down at Riverside, we ran off 28 from the Red Cold Bay. So it's starting to heat back up, it's not there yet, but sure, it's coming. That's about what we have, anybody have any questions?
They're migrating down by my house.
Are they?
Down the river.
I've noticed, I've noticed some coming down there, so I'm sure they'll be everywhere before too long.
So if anyone looked at the chief's budget, salaries are way out of whack, that's going to be reimbursed through that step program. Any questions, Chief? Thank you, sir. Public Works, Isaac is not here. Nick, did you have anything you need to update us on? Give us an update, Nick.
He's always got something.
I always got something to say, don't I? I have a little update, you know, it's packed, if they're all go through it quickly, on the, on the big sewer main project, main thing is we're actually had a meeting with a contractor today onsite to look at manhole coatings, it's been an ongoing thing, we've been trying to resolve with them. Didn't get resolution, but we have given them marching orders to prove to us that what they have out there is good there. They feel like they've done a good job, so they're going to actually have to come up with some test methods to prove to us because we've gone out two times to show them that we don't think it's there, but we're putting it on them now. At the wastewater plant, you know, we did have a pre-construction meeting last month with an alley. They are on the clock officially, as of yesterday, they haven't moved out there that I'm aware of, so they do know their time, they have 60 days, so I'm sure the rains last week probably set them back a little bit as well, but we are moving, the clock is ticking, which is good. Been working with Isaac and I, he wrapped up that Church Street Sewer, or I call it Church Street over there, by JD Spice, place that sewer. We did do surveys down Centennial Avenue, looking for that extension to pick up some more, more houses and get some pump lines, so we'll be starting design on that. Hidden Creek, Isaac's been working on a sewer line extension there, we've been fighting the gas company a little bit, had a couple, couple re-dos on how to get around it, but I think we've got a plan, we're coming up with, it's going to work. And then down bottom there, flow monitoring, that's kind of a big thing. Last month, we were able to install four flow monitors, kind of generally around this area near downtown, just in time for a bunch of rain. We put them in and got, got good rainfall data. Sent Isaac some, some data, my coworkers downloaded everything, let's see, real quick. I think between, and this wasn't the big rainfall either, we captured the big one last week, but this was just from a couple of little two-inch rainfall, a half-inch rainfall, but the two-inch rainfall we measured, almost a half million gallons of inflow during that. And then the next one was the half-inch rain, a couple of days later was between 200 and 250,000 gallons of inflow. So we definitely put them in the right spots, I think Isaac's already identified the source of a couple of those problems, so we're, we're talking about pulling those out and putting them somewhere else to keep track of it now, so. The only thing I had is, I was talking with Isaac, I think we're going to start looking at the standard specifications again pretty quickly. We started and then got real busy on other stuff, and we were talking around here today about getting those back into motion, that y'all get more development, just having things in place and not relying on developers and their engineers to, to come up with their own specifications that we have to pick apart, and so. Got any questions?
So after running the, or seeing the flow leaders and seeing, how much have we progressed or improved since we started all the, kind of figure out where everything was?
We've definitely improved, you know, we, you know, the area over there, West Fork Acres and that, that area is, I would say is, is, we have cut down the majority of the, the I and I there, the area we're looking at right now, we have one over on White Street. Isaac will be having a problem over there, so we can find that, I think he found the source of that. And then over there by Ann Street, and then off the end of Campbell, we have two big systems coming from the school, and then everywhere else in that basin. So we've kind of taken the original studies that were done by RJN, and we're, we're, we're getting into the more micro size of it, instead of looking big picture, big basins, we're starting to dial it into the smaller, where we know the problems are, so we definitely.
I mean, we had several million gallons of infiltration on the big rain before.
Yeah, yeah, and there's still problems here, but I think we're, we're honing quicker on the, on where they're coming from now. A lot of manholes missing bottoms and leaking manholes and service apps, so it's, it's good, it's, I mean, whatever.
But that'll be ongoing though, right? I mean, because once you get some fixed, you're going to have others that are going to, are not good forever.
Yeah, they're not, but, you know, I think, I think we've, we've made a good dent in it, but there's just a lot there to work with. We're just kind of peeling those layers back one by one. Any more questions?
Thanks, Nick. So they, they are narrowing that down, I've told Isaac, if this doesn't work, we're going to put a line item in his budget for rain gear so that they can just pop manholes every time it rains. But they did, as Nick said, they found a big one at White and Maple. I don't know if he's pinpointed that, he, he knows pretty close to where it is, and then in the fields, running between, is it Mecca or is it Ann Street, south, towards Zeeke's? Down through that field, there's a, there's a bad area down there that they, they've found as well, so.
It's a lot of work, isn't it?
Yeah.
How did they get that in there in the first place? It was nothing but.
Swamp?
Swamp.
Yep.
That's probably why they didn't do it very well.
Could be, could be. The good thing about that one is it's, it's relatively cheap to fix, there's no streets to tear up and replace, it's, it'll be solved, digging through dirt, so.
Is it deep?
I don't think so, I think it's shallow back there, I think that's part of the problem, because it's shallow, it's not put in deep enough, and it's that old truss pipe and just leaks like a sieve, and it just takes a wet back there all the time.
All right, next is the parks report, and our parks director is missing as well.
Did they go fishing or what?
Well, they are in the same location, right down the street. We'll leave it at that. Chad did put their unapproved minutes in the packet. Was there any questions concerning that? I thought one thing to note on their minutes were, were that they are looking for some sponsorship on that stage that they're, they're looking to put in, so maybe we can get some outside funding for that. But, and that's, they also mentioned that they've, they've identified some other stages in the area to look at and, and come up with ideas for designing ours. No questions there?
I have a question, but it's not about any of the minutes, so I can wait till later if you want me to.
Is it parks related? Ask it.
Okay, so I'm ignorant, so I'm just bringing this up. So somebody brought it to my attention that maybe sometimes we have teams from other towns that come and use our field, baseball fields to practice, and perhaps they use those because we don't charge for them to come and use our fields, whereas other fields in other cities charge outside teams to use fields, like obviously we wouldn't charge West Fork teams to use West Fork fields, but like if Fayetteville was to come out here and use it, do we charge other teams or do we take?
So if you look at the parks budget, I, and I, I'm not answering this question 100%, but I did notice that we have field rental income of $150.
So then we do charge.
For something.
I, I think we, we do charge some anyway, I'm not saying that people don't show up and use the field and leave, but I think if they get permission, they probably pay. That's my guess, but we can ask Chad next month for sure to get more clarification on it.
Somebody just told me that they thought there were maybe some teams that weren't, so I didn't know what the process, because I don't rent.
And I think, I think that's probably going to be the answer, is I'm sure there are people that show up and use them and.
And that we're not going to like sit down there babysitting.
Right.
But yeah, but I'm glad that we do charge some people, it's okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Chief Myers.
We're down just a little from the previous ones, I know you don't like it when I say that, but of course, Central did release a study the other day, and then we were the second most ambulance calls in the county for last year, so the 67 won't last very long, I'm sure. End of the year, school year, so we're praying kids, I think kindergarten's coming Thursday, most pretty, pretty kids in Greenland Friday, and 20th to West Fork, so it's a big deal there. I mentioned our blood drive last month, so we do have a date, June 15th, and we're going to do that at the community center for the, let's see, are those arts? Coming to find out, we went to a luncheon, we ended up ranking sixth out of all of their boots and badges blood drives that they do. They, they service 44 hospitals with the blood they collect here, not just here, but in their areas. So for us to rank sixth out of that, I thought was pretty impressive. So it is a friendly competition between us and the police department, but naturally, they, they didn't really pay up their part in losing last year, so I don't care if we lost this year on the playoff, so. Our end goal is to get as many people as we can, we had like 47 last year, so we'd like to beat that. Prairie Grove did, they were number one for boots and badges, so I definitely want to beat them.
How many did they have?
67, I believe, there was 20, we were actually closer to being fatal than we were in Prairie Grove. There was twenty, we were actually close to being fatal in the word Prairie Grove. Well, I think the police department there, they know, went out and gave out gift cards, restaurants, so you know. I'm trying to get Mary to give me some, she won't do it. Other than that, that's really all I got.
You might for the police department.
Any questions for Chief Myers?
We did, we probably. We may keep it a secret from some.
That's what the people have asked.
He's talking today.
He is, but what he hasn't mentioned is that he is gonna sit in and ask the mayor this week.
I am, yes.
On Friday, so we're gonna get some, some questions for. He and Christie are both wanting to do it very badly. They flipped a coin. Christie lost, so she's gonna have to wait a couple more weeks before she.
Chief, what time does the blood drive start?
I hope it starts, I'm assuming around eight. We'll say eight, nine o'clock, someone I never. Don't they get it at all?
I won't, I won't put a time in the minutes thing.
Yeah, break, break, eat lunch, I don't know.
We're, we're offering free rides for anybody. Either one you want.
All right, thank you, sir. Christie, what kind of financial report do you have for us?
Well, the city's looks really good. The, our bank balances are at five hundred forty thousand for the year so far. Our, the majority of our departments are under budget quite a bit. And the police departments does show over budget as well as the administration of justice, just five hundred dollars. The police departments is, because of the reimbursements that we are waiting on, this is the end of April. We would have gotten part of those reimbursements back already, so next month it should already even itself out. And sales tax is staying steady where it's been for probably the last six months or so, so it's, that's good. The water departments doesn't look quite as good. We have, we are down almost eleven thousand dollars in our bank balances. We did have to do another transfer out of savings this month to, to be able to pay for our operation and maintenance, for our operations. So we did, we've done a total of fifteen thousand the last two months, or each of the last two months, so a total of thirty thousand. Just to be able to pay our expenses the last two months. So on the income and expense report from, for the water department, you can see that our sewer sales, our income last month was fifty-two thousand, almost fifty-three thousand. And that our bill to Bayville was sixty-four thousand, so we were twelve thousand dollars short just on that one bill. And obviously, that doesn't include the pond amount, that's just the treatment amount. So we expect next month to look the same, if not worse, because we've had some really bad rains recently. But hopefully, I know Isaac and I are, even without rain gear, out pumping manholes in the middle of the night, in the rains and everything else, trying to locate those. So we're doing what we can to try to find those, and hopefully we'll drive a little bit, and those numbers will start to go a little bit better.
And part of that too, a lot of that is I and I, but we are pumping those ponds.
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay, so it hasn't even hit yet. We're gonna get the water off of those ponds so that Denali can come in, put lime on them, dry it up, to haul it out. So we still have that to hit as well.
Hope we do that on the entire month.
We do, we, we're gonna try to get some information to you guys on the ARPA funds, what we have left and how we kind of need to reallocate it for this month. But Isaac has a couple of invoices still outstanding on that, so we will have that next month to kind of show you what we've spent on the projects that have already been approved and for permission to reallocate things that didn't get spent or. He's got one project, one of the sewer line projects that went over a little bit of what he expected. So we'll bring some information next month to get some reallocations on that. That's all I have, I think, on the finances. I did get the election packets yesterday, so I can't give them out and start distributing them until after the twelfth. So they can be picked up at the office for anybody that's interested in running. You have till, you can't start turning them in till the county, till like August first, and you have, I think it's like ten days, I'll quote me on that. But our first weekend or two of August is when those have to be turned back in, and I can give you all that information when you can pick them up.
What day did she say, Dawn?
Said, read the second page.
I will highlight it for anybody that thinks back it up in the city.
In case you just read the front, front and go, oh, I've got.
So for you new, new members who are having to run, that haven't ran before, the veterans on the council wait until the last minute to get their signatures?
Just some of them.
I don't recommend that. Go out and get your signatures so that you're ready to turn your packets in. Any questions concerning financial reports?
Thank you.
No? All right, so we will skip old business and go start new business while we have Christie here. So in new business, we have a resolution to allocate those ARPA funds. Christie, explain that to us.
I'll try. So basically, with change in laws and regulations, the municipal league is recommending that this is how we handle our ARPA funds. So basically, the votes and decisions we made last year are kind of null and void. They don't have, we don't. In doing this, and basically what we're doing with this resolution is saying that we are going to reimburse ourselves for police and fire salaries and payroll expenses. And there's a certain amount of time, and I'm sure it's in a, I think it's in the resolution, that says what dates we're reimbursing ourselves for with that. What that does is it allows us to get all of the money back in the general fund and then use the money in any way that the city wants to. And streamlines the reporting substantially. So we don't, we're not asking to move any money. The money is in its own bank account. It's gonna stay there. We're not actually gonna physically put it back in the general fund or back, or move it around at all. This is literally just a bookkeeping adjustment that's gonna be made to change last year's budget to reflect the salaries are not as high as what we actually spent.
This is just for the actual money we got last?
This is actually for all of the money. This will, this will change the budget for last year, for the money that we already received. This will also change this year's budget for this year for the money we're gonna receive. So it's, it's going to adjust both budgets.
And, and the reason for this, Jeff, this is what regional planning is, or Arkansas planning. Municipal planning, municipal league is recommending for all cities to do. Some, some cities who've, who met sooner after this decision came out have already made this, this change with the ARPA funds.
It really gives the cities a lot more flexibility in how it's spent and how you report for it. So for one example, and we didn't know this when we did it, but one of the expenses that we approved were the digital meters. And we spent money on that. If we were to, to report using that ARPA fund for those digital meters, we would literally have to go in and put a longitude and latitude for every meter we put in the ground. That's how specific the reporting was. Plus show that we did the proper procurement for them, got all the, so that's how detailed the reporting was gonna be if we did it differently than this. This, so this reporting for last year's money that was received and spent was due by April thirtieth. So I've already gone in and done that reporting, and it was literally two numbers. I was able to print off my payroll expenses and verify that it was just for, you know, the employees that qualified for it, put the salary and the payroll in, and, and the reporting was done.
We liked it.
And we, we will have to do it. We didn't have enough expenses to cover the entire amount for last year. So I will have to go in next year and do it one more time. But it's, once I got in there and figured it out, it was just a pretty easy process. So makes life much easier. It'll make, we're still gonna track the money one hundred percent of how we spend it, what we spend it on, have all the invoices and all that at the ready, so you know, if and when they audit, we can show where all the money's gone. But it will, this will take care of our reporting process as far as the federal government and what they want to see completely.
And so with, with the projects that we approved with the first round of it, those projects are still in, in the works. As Christie said, one of them went up over budget, one or two have came in under budget, and I don't think Isaac hasn't even started a couple of them. So we're still, that money, we allocated it. We're not changing anything with that. This is literally a reporting process. With the amounts that we get this year, I told the department heads to submit plans for something that, that they would like to do in their department. Last year, all of this went to water and sewer, and I think it was well spent. And, and I, Isaac is gonna submit plans for more water and sewer in his department this year. But I do think that we should open that up to the other department heads to see if there are projects that, that they can benefit from these funds with, so.
I think some of it needs to be spent on city street equipment.
City street equipment, what kind of?
Something to clean ditches out. I've had several calls this week about ditches. And I, I did see them today working on some of them, but them are not the ones they complain about.
Or then for few houses, the owners are responsible for their own ditches, like it's needed or as it says that.
Then why are we cleaning out those?
Yeah. Like my ditch got scraped and I, I'm actually empathizing about it. My ditch doesn't fill up with water, but the neighbors does. So really, I'm gonna ask Isaac, when I can get him cornered. I, I don't like that. Quit doing that to my yard. I'm not saying we don't do them when there's, there are issues and stuff.
Well, there's plenty of issues.
There are, but in general, the property owners are responsible for their own ditches, so we realize there are some people that aren't capable or don't have the equipment and we do go out and.
Okay, I started to say, if we're not helping our city and people in our city limits, then I guarantee you we shouldn't be out there on South.
That is our city limits.
Not all of it. Not all of it.
You would know.
Not all of it, eh?
So yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's a fine recommendation. I, I think Isaac's probably gonna spend his money on, on sewer proposals before he gets to, to street equipment, but that's a discussion you and he can have. Anything else for Christie?
Any questions on this?
Sir, Dawn, do you want to add anything? I know you're standing up on all this.
It's, we talked about this a year ago. We went the longest way from qualifying for lost revenue to qualifying for lost revenue, because that's all we did. We, we took all the rules to qualify for lost revenue and took them away, because they realized the cities didn't lose revenue. But cities needed money to fix things, and so it became basically stimulus money as opposed to lost revenue.
Yeah, but why you keep it away?
But, you know, cities are gonna use it for stuff that needs to get done.
Sure.
They just are, you know? I mean, you've all been talking about it for a year. You really struggled to figure out a way to use this money the very best. And that's what, especially small cities, that's what they do, you know? They, they stretch it as they can with it, so it really is working. But it did take a long time to get it to be simplified, which.
They were making changes. The reports were due on April thirtieth, and I went on vacation, I think, on the twenty-sixth. And they were literally making changes on the twenty-fifth, and I was like, I'm just submitting it and it'll be what it'll be, but as far as I know. We got ours in good, I haven't heard differently.
They'll send you something if it's wrong.
They will. They'll let us know if it's wrong.
Because there are other cities in this state where city council members, city clerks, attorneys, mayors, suddenly got very sizable bonuses. And so not every city, you know, so reporting is important, you know, but they did try to make it as simple as possible, so.
Any questions on Christie before we vote on this? No? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We pass resolution number twenty-two zero three. I second.
All right, so we have a motion to second to pass resolution twenty-two zero three. All those in favor say yes. Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Item two of new business, I am recommending Josh Hooper to fill one of our vacant seats on the planning commission. Have any questions on Josh? Okay, do we have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion that we accept the recognition as Josh Hooper on the planning commission. Is that how you say it?
Perfect.
Can I second?
Have a motion to second. All those in favor say yes. Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Got you one more, Walter. Other business, discussion regarding leasing of the water treatment plant. What we're talking about there is the white building on the east side of the bridge. You following me, Marty? The building is in really bad shape right now. Isaac's been looking for budgeting revenues to replace the roof on that, because it's bad. The building is currently, it has old tanks in it that we used to treat our drinking water when we got it out of the river. Dawn's probably the only one that's been in that building. Yeah, so there, there is zero space in that building. There's three huge tanks in it, a stairwell. What we are currently using to date is a pipe comes in the wall, it elbows over and goes back out the wall. That is where our water gets from the east side of town to the west side of town, in respect to the bridge or the river, okay? So we're using it as a pass-through right there. Basically, it's the new system on that side of town tying into the other system over here.
That's where it reduces the pressure, so that the old side of town doesn't blow, blow up.
That's exactly right, Dawn. So now that we know what we're talking about, we have somebody that wants to lease this. Part of that lease is they want to come in and do a remodel of the building. They're gonna enclose the space where our pipes come in, keep it, the idea currently is to keep it industrial. So gut the building, new roof, heat and air conditioning, basically build an office in there. What they're wanting to do with this is have an office in this area for their plan. As they're planning developments in the West Fork area, they, they need an office space in this area to bring people to, to do this. They like that building. Basically, they want to build a deck off the side of it that overlooks Riverside Park. Great coffee, yeah. So what I don't have is specifics on this. What I am asking is, is the council open to that? Is the council open to me negotiating a lease for that building?
What are they planning?
Planning.
What, are they planning?
Yeah. Planning.
Planning, what are they planning?
They're planning a development at what is currently the quarry.
So could we have, can, or would we need to, I'm just like to have the conditions on it, like you can only do this with the building or, I don't, I don't know. Cause you said it's gonna be industrial. It is industrial. We're gonna keep it industrial, then they're gonna use it differently than that?
Yeah, so what I'm, what I'm getting at is they were fine with our pipe coming through there. They're not going to turn it into a quote-unquote office that is sheet rocked and, and the whole, they're gonna keep that industrial feel, is, is what they said.
So now you negotiate and bring back the UDS before it's approved.
We can do that, if, if that's what you need.
That's what I like.
Okay, so obviously, you don't like my negotiation skills.
No, because we don't know who it is, or there's.
It's, it's the West Fork Mine LLC.
The Rockport.
Yep.
What are we gonna do with like the tanks that are in there?
We don't know nothing.
I mean, what, what's gonna happen to the?
That's good negotiation skill. So we are not spending a dime on this. They will be, it'll be like a triple net lease, so they're in charge of utilities, all repairs. repairs, all costs.
Well, I can tell you that in the seventies, most tanks were nothing but rust, and we kept it painted, but they rusted all the time, because there's no heat in there, so there's condensation all the time.
So let me ask you this, Don, you've been in the building. Can the city use that building for anything?
No, not as it is.
So if, if somebody came in and fixed that building up, is it gonna hurt the city?
It would do nothing but give us an improvement.
That could be done, what could be done with that improvement?
Well, eventually, if they're just leasing it for time, then I guess we can do something else with it eventually, but.
So.
The big thing to me is that if we did lease it, and they tore all the stuff out of it, it would be no cost to us, and you said the roof was shot on it, there's nothing we're doing there, because that's where we used to pull our water in out of the river, treat it, and send it back out. Now we get our water from Fayetteville, so the only thing that is in there that we use at all, is what he was saying, is the valve and the pressure reducer.
And so, Don, if, if somebody came in and fixed that, in say fifteen, twenty, however many years down the road, we get a bridge across the, the river with a bike trail across it, what could that building be used for then? Would that be a hub, potentially? I don't know.
Sounds like you're selling something. You got a sell, sell slip in your bag or something?
I don't know, I see a lot of potential there.
I would need to know more about what it's gonna be used for in the long term.
It's like, there are homes right there, right? I mean, the same homes that we talked about when we were talking about the RVs coming in on the other side. So like, I would wonder how are they gonna access it and how much in the parking lots, since they're wanting to have meetings and people coming in and lighting that they're maybe wanting to put outside. That's why I was asking if we need to have some conditions in place for what they're gonna do to that building, since it, I mean, I'm just wondering. I'm just throwing that out there.
So, we can, we can certainly go down that route.
Well, they'd be, we, that's why I was gonna ask, will they be coming to us for a conditional use or a rezon, because right now it's half agriculture, half residential, so they go running a business, a planning office out of this.
So that is residential, that building?
I was just looking at it, looks, yeah, half, I mean, it's kind of an odd line that's drawn, but yeah, part of it's residential, but most of it's agricultural, though.
Interesting.
I have to wonder why they want an office way over here to, to put something over at the quarry.
Yep. All good questions. So, I think the, the answer to that is, what do they have at the quarries right now?
Nothing, but you can build just as easy as you can actually easier than a robot.
Just put one of those little buildings out there.
Yeah.
Would it, would it overlook?
I mean, I just feel like they're.
Well, because that's the deal, but that's the exact thing.
I feel like there's a difference.
So are they trying to have a pretty view of the river, so when they have people to come in to try to get them to be in the quarry, they're gonna like, look at the beautiful landscape of West Fork City. Is that what we're?
That's.
I, I think that's what he's trying to sell.
Okay.
That's what they want. Basically, they came in, they said, hey, we love this spot, this is beautiful.
Sure.
We can sell West Fork out of this spot. This, this provides us an immediate spot to come in and put a developer to start working on stuff. What I am not willing to do is come in and fix your building and pay you top dollar to lease it. So, what they wanna do is they wanna come in, they wanna get some quotes, what's it gonna cost to put a new roof on the building, what's it gonna cost to clean out the building, to bring it up to where it is a usable building, and then they wanna credit back on their rent. That, there's no, I don't think there's any angle there, but.
I know, that sounds like an angle.
Okay, now you've gone too far.
There.
It's Tom Terrell, there's always an angle.
Yeah.
So I can tell you that.
There's an angle there.
His name is not associated with it at all. I'm not saying he's not, I'm saying his name is not.
Well, his name was all over that quarry in here in that meeting that one night, coming out of his mouth.
That is what they're trying to do.
So I like what you said about getting information every minute to us, and maybe have, depending on how it's owned, getting, finding out that kinda stuff and what conditions maybe?
So, if, if it's zoned, if it is agricultural, that would be the city would be rezoning its own property. And if that's, if we, if we don't wanna do that, that's fine.
It sounds good to me.
Or like I said, go down the conditional use permit route, and where you can only be that one business, or you know, whatever.
If we have any idea how long the term of leasing, they're talking about.
Thirty years.
Thirty years.
Thirty years? That's just, dude, it sounds a little too good for what it is.
So, let's say, what, what would it cost to remodel that, Don?
Today?
Hundred and fifty thousand?
Oh, yeah.
If we amortize a hundred and fifty thousand over thirty years, what's that come to a month? The question is, how long do they need a lease before they can get their money back?
I, I guarantee they can't touch it for a hundred and fifty thousand, not a new roof and clean out.
So.
There's no way.
What we are trying to figure out is, one, is the city council okay with that? And two, what are they gonna have to put into it?
Yeah.
That's.
My concern with the long-term goal is.
Fair enough.
Right, because it could actually become a little eyesore out there. I mean, we didn't want the RV and everything out there, well, this could be the same, become a little eyesore.
Well, there's not much property that goes with it. There's enough to have a little store or building in the back.
We have a little.
Circle around the building.
People sitting out there just helping out.
Do you need a motion, or?
I want, I want the council's approval, yes, before I, before I move forward.
Approved until what?
To negotiate.
Negotiate and bring, I say bring back to us.
Yeah, I wanna hear the whole deal before we start.
You'd have to come here anyway.
Yeah, a lease is gonna have to be approved, right?
To lease property to the city. You'll also have to pass a resolution.
So we'll have to go to planning commission first, if it has to be rezoned or conditional use, or, okay?
We'll get a public hearing, I don't worry.
Okay, okay.
That's a good point, that neighbor.
But there's our pipes are in there.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Dina wants, Dina wants to know what your motion is.
Yeah, what's your motion?
That he negotiates the deal and brings back to us for approval. Does that sound right?
But it could potentially need to go to planning commission before it comes to us for approval, right? Like if it's rezoning or conditional use.
So I think, I think if the council is going to approve a lease, then it would go, but if, if we're not gonna approve it, there's no need in rezoning.
Okay, so you're saying we would approve first, then if we approve, then it has to go through the proper channels, then it would potentially come back to us again?
It would come back to us to approve the deal.
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, right now, on the, on the regional plannings map here, they're showing it is in the same parcel as the river park is attached to it, so there might be, be a split as well. Or you're just leasing part of it, I don't know how that records, but.
I think the harder we can make it to develop here, the better off we are.
I'll second your motion.
Okay. So we have a motion to second to move forward with negotiations. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. All right. I don't really have any other comments. I will tell you that there has been a study of cost to tie into city water and city sewer to get it to the quarry. And I will tell you that a planner has been on site, and that LIDAR is supposed to be taking place within the next month. So LIDAR is shooting radar of the terrain within like one-foot increments, so that they can begin a development plan. I think enough money is being spent that we can expect something to go out there. That being said, we really need a planning document in place. So, Walter, when did you say that next meeting was?
Monday, the twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Six-thirty here. And we're hitting into the future, or the master street plan.
Master street plan.
That'll be this meeting, that's our main focus of this upcoming meeting.
So Christie and I met with, Christie and Isaac and I met with Garber once already to look at a master street plan. We drew lines all over the place. When the public sees it, people are probably gonna freak out about some of the lines we've drawn for future roads in the city. But, what I want everyone to know is, we are drawing lines so that if some, if an area starts to develop, so Dina, for example, if that area starts to develop to the east of your house.
Oh goodness.
There's a lot of land.
Okay.
Right, back in there.
You fixing to do a road?
We, we have drawn a road from Al Hollow over to Mineral Springs.
Okay.
Okay? So the idea there is not that the city is gonna come out and leave high and start putting a road in, but if development starts growing in that area, we wanna be able to say to developers, we want this to keep extending. Does that make sense? So from one subdivision to the next, basically the plan is, if, if that's gonna build out, we want another road going through there, not just a cul-de-sac here or a cul-de-sac there. We have also drawn exit on-ramps and exit ramps at the quarry overpass and the Campbell Loop overpass. The highway department had a, a westernly north-south highway route. They had two proposed routes in the past to add a westernly loop going north. Since they've done that, those areas, Cave Springs, Elm Springs, Centerton, have blown up in residential developments. Well, they don't really wanna put a highway through a residential development, have to buy all that out, so now they're looking at another route. I kinda get the idea that the state is looking for a route that comes out in between the Campbell Loop and the Greenland on-ramp. So, West Fork is saying, no, we want that to hit one of our current on-ramps. We want, we want that to be the, the main corridor that takes the, the highway west and then back north. And by doing this master street plan and getting it approved, we at least get on the state highway department's agenda for that. Whether we get it or not, who knows? But, the idea is, if we don't draw it on there, that is prob, that road is probably gonna come out in between Greenland and Campbell Loop. We would rather it go to an already overpass.
Which would make more sense, so they probably do that.
So what they're, what they're looking at is, where do the mountain ranges come together so that we can find a pass-through? There used to be a road that went through the quarry from West Fork to Prairie Grove a long, long time ago. We're making a push that that's where that needs to take off and go back over to Prairie Grove and then turn north. Whether we get it or not, don't know. In other news, that I can't give you specifics on, I have talked to Arkansas Highway Department on Friday. We, we are expecting a letter, Christie, within the next month or two, so that we can make an announcement one way or another on the bridge.
Cool.
We, we initially submitted a plan for an eighty-foot bridge, well, I think it was eighty feet, it was three lanes with a bike path on both sides of it. We went big.
Too big to go home.
That's right. So the state has called and said, we can't do that.
Just take one bike trailer off?
So, to negotiate, I said, well, how about we, we get a new bridge, there's two lanes with a twelve-foot pedestrian way on one side of it that meets the greenway specifications. So that is being submitted. We'll, we'll know in a couple months what the outcome is, but I think that if that's approved, we're in that twenty-three to twenty-six timeframe. So that is amazing.
So is now the time to write letters? Aren't we supposed to write some letters or something?
You didn't write your letter?
I think, I, I think.
Did you write your letter?
I think everyone who wrote their letter or made their phone calls, so.
I didn't write?
Luckily for the city council, I think the Friends of the Library took up the cause, and I think they have made several phone calls and written some letters.
I'll write letters, we're people with bags and shelves in my building.
Blair, thank the Friends of the Library again for me. I can't count on this group to do anything. I think, I think we're, we're in good contention to get the bridge replaced. I don't know what that's gonna look like, chief, but I'm sure you'll wanna be involved in enclosures and that type of thing. So, we'll get you, as soon as we get more information, we'll make sure that you're in contact with the right people to do what you do. But, I do think we're about to get a rush. Depending on what, what the interest rates do, that's obviously going to affect the markets, but I would really appreciate some council input on that planning document. That's really gonna help to have that in place before people start coming in wanting to put stuff up. Okay? John?
I'll make a motion.
Wait, 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 wait.
Sorry, other business.
We gotta vote now.
Sorry, did I wait too long?
No.
Okay, so just really quickly, I'm really sorry, but there was something on Facebook about the code enforcement officer, so can you just give us a brief summary on where we are with that?
Yep.
So.
I'm glad you brought that up, I forgot about it. I haven't had an email about that in a while. So a, as you guys know, toward the end of last year, we'd set some money aside in the budget. I had contracted Kathy Gilham to, to do code enforcement at, on a contract basis, try to trial run, see what we're gonna get into. That didn't go, that didn't go well. So, we have, we have moved on, and the city has hired a new employee that's part-time. So we're, he's interested in doing code enforcement as part of his duties at the city. His name is Aaron Foster, so we are, he hasn't started it yet, but we're getting everything set up for him to basically add on a couple hours to do active code enforcement. We, we have met with JD. He's made, I think, an attempt to clean the place up down there. He is going to submit some, some plans to the city for some future changes to that property, but he's working with us now. I think we're, I think we're making progress on it. We are actively putting together a letter, turning kickback for the old West Fork Auto Parts. That, that should go out, we, I don't know how close we are to getting that ready, but probably at the end of this month, we'll have a letter to them. It's gonna be similar to what we sent the hardwoods. Basically, it's gonna be a list from every department, if, if they're in, out of compliance with any department in the city, it's all gonna be contained in one letter and delivered to them. It's all going to be contained in one letter, um, and delivered to them.
Can I make a motion?
Does that answer your question?
What does Aaron Foster, what, what is his, I guess, his, what are his duties? I mean, what is he in a department, or?
Yes, he is in Isaac's department, I don't know where he's getting paid out of the street.
Paid out of the city, he actually took Mr. Ed's place.
Oh, right.
He's mainly doing mowing and, um, of work on a part-time basis.
So, Aaron is extremely quiet, um, and I've said this about every time I've talked about code enforcement. I don't want somebody out there stirring up trouble with every citizen in town. I want, I want somebody making citizens aware where they're out of compliance. If it escalates past that, we'll get the police department involved. Um, but he is, he's a, he's a quiet guy that can have a conversation with somebody about where they're not in compliance without, um, causing a fistfight, I believe.
Yeah, every time you say code enforcement, I see these little white cars coming right there.
Yeah, yeah. So, we, we're in definite need of it, um, for, for some of the residences, uh, in town. It needs to be done. Um, the police department is still responding to complaints, uh, on a complaint-driven basis. I'll, I'll say, just to keep everybody else out of, out of the fight, the mayor's office is responding to some of the, uh, more unsightly, um, businesses. Uh, I've, I've taken that fool on me so that when they're upset, they're, they're mad at me. Um, but, but that's how we're handling, like, the Penny Hardwoods and the, uh, West Fork Auto Parts thing, that's kind of.
Well, it does look better down there.
It does, yeah, and, and he, he knew it was bad, um. JD, JD does great work, it just, it takes him a while to do it sometimes, so, uh.
Well, he did kind of just shove it in there.
Yep.
So, I don't know who's listening, so, citizen out there had a concern about codes and somebody's not following. What steps do they need to take?
Um, so, they need to contact city administration.
Okay.
Uh, would be the easiest way to do it. And there, and there are cases where, um, code enforcement's somewhat subjective, right? Uh, so, we, we do get some complaints sometime where to the complainer, it's a, it's a very big situation. Um, usually, they're, they've got a beef with the neighbor, you know, there's something that, that kind of starts some of that stuff. So, it, it is hard, and, and I'll even say, Goggins can attest to this. Um, we've had people get really irate and, and we've had, uh, we've had the police department leave situations instead of making an arrest. Um, because that's, at the end of the day, that's not what we're after, and there's certain situations going on with, with certain people that it, it makes it tough. Now, is that right? I'm the first one to say it's wrong. But, um, whether the rest of you do or not, I've got a heart, and we're not going to go pick on somebody that can't defend it or can't fix it, right? We're going to try to do something to fix the situation rather than.
And that makes it right.
I hope so.
What can do wrong or not.
I don't, I don't think everybody would agree, but, um, that's just where we're at.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Don?
I'll just go down.
You got anything?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.